Commissioner Randall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stewart is joining us online. So with that, the first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, its approval of minutes, January 21st and January 27th, approval of payroll and approval of vouchers. It's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. They've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. One of the new things that we are adding to the agenda through some of the discussions that we've had over the last week on the development standard and regulations update is to put an update on our agenda and the planning and zoning commission meeting agendas just to update everyone every few weeks as to where we are in the process and what's happening. So with that, I'd like to give the following update. First of all, we had the public hearing on round one. And following that, we did close the public hearing, tabled any action. And what we'd like to do on round one is we will have be having a work session with planning and zoning to review the comments and concerns from the public hearing. And we'll determine how we want to move forward with round one. Round two, thanks to all that attended the open houses, we've decided to gather more information through area meetings at the end of February in preparation for compiling all of the info and providing that info to the planning areas to get their feedback at the end of March. I do want to clear up a couple of things that came up in that public hearing time. First of all, our consultants are not from Colorado, as was stated multiple times. They are Melissa, the lead on with Logan Simpson, lives in Cheyenne. And Sophie and Jim, the other two that work with us quite a bit, live in Utah. They also have an attorney that is licensed in Wyoming and specializes in planning. So that is the team that we are using from Logan Simpson. When we had the RFPs go out because of the money involved were required by our procurement policy to put these out. So request for proposals went out and we had three companies apply. One of the companies was the one that did our land use plan, which we determined maybe to go a different direction from how that worked. The second one was from Teton County in Wyoming. Had some experience in land use plans, but very little experience in rules and regulations. The third one was Logan Simpson, who had multiple communities and counties in Wyoming that they have worked with and has a history of doing rules and regulations. So that's where we determined that we would hire Logan Simpson. So I just wanted to clear those up. And if anybody else has anything else they'd like to add from what we learned last week on the DSR and where we're headed. I'd just like people to please pay attention to legal notices as far as advertisements for meetings, whether they're work sessions, open houses or public hearings, please keep an eye out for those notices. We want your input. Thank you. So with that, the next thing on our agenda is the Powell Clark's Fort Conservation District Annual Update and Funding Assistance for Small Acreage Workshop. Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So first, I'm probably a new face to you guys. My name is Shannon Darrow and I took over for Ann at the Conservation District in the middle of October. So originally my husband and I moved to Powell in the fall or the summer of 2021. And I was the ag teacher at Powell High School for two years. After having my daughter, I realized that the strenuous life of an ag teacher was not where I needed to put my focus and I wanted to focus more on raising my family. So after briefly moving back home to Colorado, we actually moved to Cody this fall before I took on this job. And even though I've been here for a very short time, I'm sucked in, as Ann would say. So as for the Conservation District, we are still working closely with Cody Conservation District and our other partner organizations. We recently completed our updated long range plan. Some topics outlined in our long range plan are continuing projects outlined in the Shoshone River watershed plan. Continuing community education, working with our local partners and forming new partnerships where we feel is applicable to promote sustainable land use practices and support continued agriculture production where we see fit. We would love to see all agricultural land stay in production, but we understand that that's not the trend that we've seen recently. And we realize that we need to support all of our landowners and Powell Clark's Fort Conservation District boundaries. In order to do that, we're looking at offering more services. In the past, we've had a very successful tree seedling sale business or and we have started that again this spring and hope to continue that in the years to come. We also just finished our level one study in April of 2024. And there were several projects outlined in that study that we would like to see get off the ground in the next couple of years. We are also looking into funding opportunities to provide landowners with a cost share program for well testing. Currently to support landowners though, we host a rural living or a small acreage workshop, as you guys know. We work with Cody Conservation District, UW Extension, Park County Weed and Pest, Cody Canal, Lakeview, Hart Mountain, Willwood and Shoshone Irrigation Districts to make this happen. As you know, part of the workshop is to better educate landowners on sustainable practices and being better stewards of the land. And we are adding a new top topic this year on wildfire prevention and mitigation. It's a very hot topic and so we feel that it's important to have in there. Traditionally, this has been held in Powell every other year. But however, it's gained a lot of traction and it's become very popular. And so we are moving it to Cody this year. It will be on March 29th from nine to three at the Cody Auditorium. And of course, we would love to see each of you guys there. Unfortunately, just because of a few conflicts, we haven't been able to get a flyer out, but we will get you guys a flyer and an invitation shortly. With that being said, we would like in the future for it to swap between Powell and Cody every other year. Just to gain more traction throughout all of Park County. Those who attend the workshop will pay a small fee. However, and we have a few grants in order to get supplies for the event going. However, it does not cover the entire cost of the workshop. And as you guys know, the Conservation Districts and the Irrigation Districts don't necessarily have the capacity to swallow all of that cost. So we were hoping that you guys would be willing to set aside a thousand dollars to help offset our costs for the small acreage workshop.
Thank you. I can say from experience in going to the workshop that it's extremely helpful. We've been on our eight acres for 43 years, I think, and just went last year to the workshop and learned some things, which is great. So thank you for doing it, number one.
Of course.
Thoughts?
Madam Chair, yeah, it reminds me of a conversation I had with a fellow who just moved to the Powell area and was asking me how to turn on the irrigation gate. And I said, don't. And I gave him some ideas, but a workshop like this is for those kind of people who would have questions. They move out to beautiful Wyoming and have a little spot farm or little hobby farm. They don't know what they're doing. And so these really pay off for them when they have these. So I'm for it.
Madam Chair, question, do you know what your actual costs have been in the past couple of years overall?
Um, roughly, I want to say it's about $5,700.
How much?
Uh, $5,700, I would say. That might be a little high. Trent is very big on providing a meal for everyone, which we do feel is important because it allows people to have open ended conversations and talk more with each of our workshop presenters. And we do have vendors as well that come to the event. This year, we are looking at doing a meal, maybe not as big as Trent does. And so it may not be quite as high. We also are expecting around 100 participants, but again, we're unsure because this is the first time that we've had it in Cody. In our meetings, Trent has said that he's roughly covered around $2,200 of, and that's mostly from the meal. From what I've researched this year, it's probably going to be around $1,500 if we do have 100 people. And we're also looking at getting some sponsorships from the banks.
Trent, excuse me, Madam Chair, Trent, had the Irrigation District covered 2,200 of it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I, Commissioners, I attended every one of these that they've not to the, the first one, I was there the whole time. The last year, I think I only came part, part of it, but they definitely fill the need for educating. I was surprised the turnout and the questions that were asked and things like that. I think it's, it's very, very good for the county out, outside. I believe we donated every year. I don't know if that much. I want to say 500 bucks last year. Do you know?
For sure. Um, in my records, I did not find an exact number, but Trent did feel that it was around $500.
So I would. I was looking at her budget and I'm not sure where we pull it out of the, I suppose, under contracts and services. I don't know if we do have a a line item for education, but I think that's mostly meant for us.
If we go to.
Training, I don't.
Can the county clerk weigh in on that?
Yes, there is. Would that, we, we currently have 5,000 as a line item on our contingency fund. That would be, okay.
Madam Chair, what you said that you're going to charge some of the attendees or the attendees a small fee, do you know what you're planning for, you know, to make off of that? At most, we would charge them $10 a person. So if there was 100 people, it'd be roughly $1,000. Trent, talking to people over in Powell have felt that they would be willing to pay a higher amount. But just talking with Cody Conservation District and the Irrigation Districts, they're not sure if people would be willing to pay as high as $20. So we were keeping it around $10 for this year.
One, Madam Chair, one last, the vendors that are there, and I've noticed that, I mean, you have private sprinkler system, irrigation, different, I mean, do you charge them to set their booths up or what all, oh, you do?
Yeah, yeah. It's a $50 charge.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, I'm gonna go out here and make a.
I was just gonna, Commissioner Stewart, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that I would, I would support helping it out. Unfortunately, I haven't attended one. I kind of plan on doing it this year. So I would support some kind of funding if we can find a place.
Madam Chair, I move to, to donate a thousand dollars towards the small acreage training seminars coming up this year in Cody on March 29th for the Conservation Districts to host. As well as here, I mean, everybody's hosting.
Yeah, we kind of all work together.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve a thousand dollars toward the small acreage workshop as requested. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. And I just update the Commissioners, we had one thing left on our original ARPA dollars that we had offered to the Conservation District to buy a little bit more testing equipment. And they have done that. It's done. And so that'll finish that grant out, but we appreciate you getting that done for us.
Yes. Thank you, guys, also for that money. Sorry, it was, it was a little bit of a struggle to find equipment.
Yes, I understood. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm curious to see if your turnout says good and we're here.
Yes, hopefully it is. Hopefully we can get it advertised.
Right.
Get people here.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're pretty close. The next thing on our agenda, Hoyt and Carrie Satterwhite, managing partner request regarding stock car races. Please just identify yourselves for the record on the recording.
Carrie Satterwhite and Hoyt Satterwhite.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're coming just to kind of get the ball rolling because we used to do stock car races at the fairgrounds. And we would like to get those going again in the community. So we found kind of a place that we really think is a great location where the noise won't be a problem. And it's sort of centered between all the cities. But it's Bureau of Reclamation land. So we've spoken with reclamation and we would have to have a managing partner, which is some governmental entity. It could be, I don't know, it could be exhaustive list. The land, though, that we found is in the county. So we thought this would be a good place to start to see if the rec, if the Commissioners would be interested in helping us by be a managing partner. Should we be able to address the concerns of reclamation for that spot? So we ran it up their flagpole just without any formal introduction to it. They sent back concerns of environmental concerns and noise pollution, which has always been a problem with the races. So, but the location, there is no one out there. It's where the old feedlot used to be. And to reclaim anything that might involve the racing as like clay or whatever for the surface, how you reclaim it is with manure, strangely enough. So a perfect location there. So we're really going to work hard with reclamation to try and make it all work out. For the community, it's, it's needed. Like the kids don't really have a lot of places to go. They're very limited or even a place that they can go cheaply for their families to do something as one where it's good, clean fun and not, you know, getting into trouble sort of things. Years ago, we did a projected direct and indirect economic impact study, which it took me forever to find. And this was made probably 1998 with the help of the Billings Chamber of Commerce. We converted it to our little Speedway in Powell. And of course, the numbers have grown over the years, I'm sure. But you can see that it does bring quite a bit of money into the community. And we think it's something that would be really good. There's 160 acres out there. So probably we've talked about, you know, maybe having a little go kart thing where kids could go ride go karts. Things like that, maybe a little more than the stock car races, but we have to try to figure out where we land with the reclamation too. So.
Can you explain what the Bureau means by managing partner? I mean, what would the obligations be of that governmental entity?
So they don't really want us calling them every five seconds. And it's kind of what I got. So the Commissioners would kind of be the middleman, like they would help us develop a lease, oversee the lease, basically. It's, I did ask them about insurance, who's responsible for that? And it would be on us totally to ensure and take care of. But should there be a change to the lease or something, that's where you guys would come in and we would come to you and say, this is what we want to do to change. And then you would be the middle guy between the reclamation. Well, there is one guy that oversees this area. So I don't know why they do that, but it's just one of their requirements. So.
Okay. Other questions?
Madam Chair, just for clarification purposes, is, is there a contract for the Commissioners to enter into? And if there is, is it with you or is it with the Bureau of Reclamation?
It's, it would be with the reclamation. You would probably say, you know, give some affirmation that you would be the managing partner. I, the steps are kind of unclear because every situation for reclamation is different. So when you look on the website, it says every situation's different. I mean, there's really no clear cut thing. There is a formal process to apply. So that will be our next step with them. And you know, I don't really know what they would require totally of the commission quite yet either.
I think we would have to look at the secondary contract. I think there's maybe one that goes both ways. Because if we're not going to be held liable or accountable and no financial, and they are, we need to guarantee that probably with a contract from our side down. So we'll have to see how that goes.
It seems to me they probably have some kind of a form that they do with the managing partners, if they have such a thing. So I would expect so.
Madam Chair, I, I like the concept. I'm not sure where the partnership and our county's involvement would have, how far to go with that. I don't know if most of you remember the, you know, the Hailies at the, the fairgrounds over in Powell. And it was, it was building up to be quite a deal. There was just a lot of conflict with being in the city. Are there any other locations that you've considered? I mean, I wasn't even aware that they, they have drag races up at, by the airport up out of Powell. Is there any way it could work in with that?
Well, we're looking into that as well. We're just trying to find a kind of a central location that's out of the city, you know? And we live in Ralston, so just came up one day. He used to work over there. So I was like, you know, that's a nice location.
Next, how many acres do you think you need?
You know, probably 10 would be the minimum. I would say 10. You know, you've got parking and it takes a little space. So. Yeah, well, yeah.
You said that parcel was 160 acres, but obviously you wouldn't be using the whole 160 acres.
Right, yeah. So I don't know if they would require us to lease the whole 160 or if they would just give us a portion. I, you know, don't know exactly where they would land on that yet either. It's quite a process. So.
Sounds like it.
So they, we've talked about things like Battle of the Bands or things like that, you know? Ways to use it. Should they make us take the whole 160? Cause then that will be, of course, more money than 10 acres. So you've got to be able to pay the rent, basically. We have looked on the tax assessor's rolls at county lands to see if the county has any land that we could maybe lease also. Not in the city, though. I don't, even though the police department had gone around the outside edges of the races during their stock car racing, it was never louder than a lawnmower. People who live right there still complained. And so we really want to get away from that, you know?
Madam Chair, like with BLM with us, the, it's always, you're going to have to answer the question, our liability of money.
Right.
That's usually when you're dealing with government. So we've got to make sure that that we're not on the hook for anything, for one thing. And, you know, it's going to have to go through our county attorney too.
Sure.
He's going to have to sign off on what this managing partnership is and to make sure our key terms are covered. If you're out in that area, you're probably still going to have to deal with some of the landowners in that area too, if anybody's living near that. We're going to have to deal with dust on the roads and out there. And there's an issue with that. So there's, there's quite a few things that you have to start working on. But I think the first step would be to come up with, with the actual, the, the contract of what a managing partner is and make sure that our county attorney has a look at it and make sure as we're a government entity, rear ends are covered.
Right.
Can you use them, can you use the microphone?
Sorry, he has a broken jaw. So.
Geez.
What can you do to win?
Okay.
He was in a road rage accident in front of the jail in Basin.
Okay.
If I may say, though, I believe that, that they want y'all to oversee, make sure that we're doing what we're said that we're going to do and stuff. So, but no, we would never hold y'all.
No, you're good. You're good. Didn't realize that. Not a problem.
And knowing Hoyt, I know road rage when he was a recent.
I guess, you know, it's our reason for coming is just to say this is something that's on the horizon. We're going to come and ask you about this and see what things you might want to know in the get go and kind of get going with it ourselves as well.
You might have a conversation with our planning and zoning, even though it is federal lands, there probably would need to be an SUP of some kind. And I don't know what all will be in that criteria.
Sure.
But you might visit with them a little bit and make sure that as we start working through, if there's criteria that we can meet it all.
Okay, yeah. We just got done working with them as a matter of fact. So great job what they do.
Okay.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thanks. I'm fully supportive of the idea to move forward and, and check out the legalities. I know years ago, at the end of the stock car season, they had what they call the Battle of the Badges. And yes, I was grand champion. And I think I was even driving one of the Satterwhite vehicles. But I, I think it's a good thing to partner with as long as the legalities are there and that were covered. I know years ago, when we tried to get to Archery Range going here in Cody, the, the county wouldn't work with us and we ended up going with the city. And, and they were a great partner. And I, I think, I think it's just something we need to explore and, and make sure we get to sign off of the county attorney. I think where they're going to put it, I would agree that the, the noise is not going to be an issue. Cause there's, there's so very few houses out there, but I, I think it's worth at least trying to partner with and see what we can do to help.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a point, Madam Chair, what Scott was saying with, you know, law enforcement was always there. Getting additional law enforcement out there too. So you'd have to talk to Daryl and see if you can get some, some work out there too.
We had put together business plan in 2008. We were going to start the stock car races again out at Ralston on John Cousins land. But I had to have a backside drag out to where I couldn't walk. So that had to be put on the side. Now that acreage is being used as the gravel pit. So we're left to look for other places to do it. Land's very expensive. So, you know, hard to find just 10 acres somewhere.
Okay, um, I guess so. It sounds like a little bit homework from you guys as far as what exactly would be required of that partner? And, and how we move forward with that. So if you want to gather that information and then come back and see us, provide that to us, then that'd be great.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. We have about five minutes until a public hearing.
Commissioner Stewart, I was also in on those races and I think you rubbed me a couple of times. Anything for first place, right?
If you're not rubbing, you're not racing. Actually think I took out a highway patrolman in that race when I won it. He tried to pit maneuver me and I got him back.
At least on paper.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. That'd be interesting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I just wanted to comment real quick while I'm thinking about it. The, the audio in there is, is really good. But we still have to do something in the other meeting room.
Oh, with the other one? Okay.
It's great in here, but in the other meeting room, it's horrible.
Okay, I'll talk to IT.
Okay.
See what we can get done. Good morning. We'll be just a minute till we have staff. Yeah? Not yet.
Is the location for the one that they're proposing, is that, like if you're going to Ralston, is it to the right?
Like northwest of above Powell, off of lane nine. Nine?
I'm not sure where they.
The old feedlot.
Well, that's where they want to put it?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. Isn't that, isn't that off of nine coming west? Yeah, coming west out of Powell before you get to.
If you're coming out of Powell heading west, it would be right before the park county's road bridge.
Okay. Yeah, sir.
I was going to ask about that. So.
You know where lane, you know where lane nine is? Go, oh, if you went up road 12, you'd still be going left a little ways. And there used to be a feedlot on the right. Go, oh, if you went up road twelve, you'd still be going left a little ways, and there used to be a feedlot on the right, on the north side of the road as you went west, before you get to the Badger Basin Highway. It's it's a ways, maybe a couple miles back to the.
Yeah, like lane, road fourteen, might be fifteen.
Might be, yeah.
You know where the Road Bridge shop is?
Yeah.
Yeah, just straight north and a little east. Do you remember where the big feedlot was from?
I don't remember where the feedlot was either, and I've been here for a long time. I bet if I saw it, I would know. I'm not looking for it next time.
Back towards Polkett.
You know where the Powell Road and Bridge Shop is? Look northwest.
Northeast.
Or north. The shop? It's right in there.
I mean, lane nine is runs direct there.
There was reflux.
Oh, yeah. I know it's weakened this off. Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
So the next thing on our agenda, public hearing, review of Old Faithful RV Park Site Plan Amendment. Jenny Kramer and Erica from Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, I will just summarize the findings for you. Spencer McBurney submitted a site plan review without SUP application on behalf of Old Faithful RV Park on January fifteenth to request clarification and or amendment of condition number five of Park County Board of County Commissioners Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. Specifically, the applicant requests that the restriction for construction activities only apply to outdoor construction, which was prohibited from November fifteenth through April thirtieth of each year, and not to apply to inside construction so that they can complete the interior work of the cabins. In September of two thousand and twenty-two, just to give you a brief history, the applicant requested approval of a site plan review to operate a three-season RV park consisting of twelve sixteen-by-twenty-four cabins, forty-five RV pads, and a two-story structure containing bathrooms, showers, laundry, a convenience store, an office, and two apartments. On April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Board of County Commissioners approved Old Faithful RV Park Site Plan by Resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-two. The resolution included conditions, and condition number five stated the applicant shall not operate commercial or allow construction activities on the property from November fifteenth through April thirtieth of each year. On May third, the applicant requested an extension of the site plan expiration, which was May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And on May seventh, the planning director approved a one-year extension of the expiration date to May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The property is zoned commercial retail under land use change LUC ninety-six, which was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in nineteen ninety-four. County regulations do not provide provisions for special use permits within LUCs. However, county regulations specify that site plan reviews were required for all recreation uses, including campgrounds. The property is in the North Fork Planning Area approximately fifteen miles west of Cody on the south side of Highway fourteen sixteen twenty, with a physical address of thirty-two fifty-six North Fork Highway. The easternmost and southernmost portions of the property are in a special flood hazard area associated with Jim Creek and the North Fork of the Shoshone River. The property is surrounded primarily by residential properties and exempt BLM lands to the west. There has been commercial use on a property to the south-southeast on the south side of the river and ag use further to the southeast. The North Fork of the Shoshone borders the property to the south, and Jim Creek runs north to south through the east portion of the property. The applicant has initiated construction of the cabins related to the campground use in addition to portions of the small wastewater system to serve the use. Legal notice requirements have been met. The application was forwarded to relevant agencies as required. And the Park County Treasurer's Office stated taxes have been paid in full. Park County Public Works do not have any additional concerns or requirements regarding the amendment. Game and Fish Department stated they are okay with an exemption for interior work only, provided no more than two trucks are present at a given time. Park County Wheat and Pests noted large infestations of spotted knappweed exist on the southeast portion of the property, and a long-term noxious weed management plan has not yet been received for review and approval as required by the original Board of County Commissioners approval. YDOT stated they have no concern with the proposed amendment. And a public comment was received by a neighboring landowner voicing concern over the applicant's disregard that has been shown for following the proposed development in the approved site plan. In addition to the conditions of approval, they feel amending condition number five will disturb wildlife. This comment was included in the packet. Two additional comments have been received after packaging, one of which you were copied on, which more or less mirrored the comments that were in the first in the first email that you were copied on and included in the packet. The second was just received this morning, and we just provided you a copy. They had intended to attend, but couldn't due to the snowstorm. They agree with the two comments you received from the Bergens. Should you choose to approve the Old Faithful RV Park Site Plan Amendment to allow indoor-only construction activities on the property before April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, Stafford commends the following conditions. Number one, this amendment only applies to construction activities through April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five and does not otherwise alter condition number five of the original site plan approval. Number two, the applicant shall comply with all other conditions of Park County Board of County Commissioners Resolution of Approval, number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-two dated April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And number three, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Standards and Regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so first I would ask if there's any public in attendance that would like to speak to this issue? Is there any public here that would like to speak to this issue?
Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We do have, I'm sorry, I'm not used to looking at the screen. We do have a comment from the public. Is she able to talk at this point?
I think I am now. Sorry, it took me, I thought that my microphone was off and that the host would bring me in, and then, so I raised my hand and then realized I could unmute myself. Can you hear me okay?
You can, and if you would go ahead with your comments, please.
Sure. I guess my first comment was the the ti- the timing of the letter with the packet. I received, I'm sorry?
We're we're gonna ask you to identify yourself.
Oh, hi, I'm Kim Bergen.
Thank you.
The timing of the the registered letter versus being able to actually look at the packet. I've had the letter for probably a week and a half and finally got emailed a copy of what they were asking to do yesterday. I went ahead and made my comments because I didn't feel like it was fair for you to get things on the day of and try to read it and figure it out. I would just strongly recommend in the future that letters and scheduling does not happen until the packet is available for people to look at. Because if I had seen that Game and Fish said that two trucks were allowed, my comments would have included what kind of trucks? Just living across the river and watching them work? I have a feeling Game and Fish are thinking two little pickup trucks. And seeing how things have gone over there, I wouldn't be surprised to see two tractor-trailer trucks. So I would have just made that that comment had I had a chance to see the packet. Does it include snowplows? I mean, it, I think, like I said, Game and Fish were probably thinking small term, and this is a very big project. And then beyond that, okay, say you go with the two trucks. Who then is responsible for monitoring that? Is that Game and Fish? Is that somebody at Planning and Zoning? From my letter, you can see, I mean, I look out my window and I see what they're doing. I have no idea who to contact when I see things going on that appear not to be part of their site plan. Has anybody been out to check the property in the past year while construction was going on? And if so, how many times and who? So I I just, I just would like to see them keep their word and keep to their plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? We do have one other letter that Jenny mentioned into the record from Michael and Monica Maketa, Makita. So just so you're aware that that one is part of the record also. Any other public comment?
Move to approve or to in the public here.
Second.
The motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, a question for staff because I don't have their the original SUP in front of me.
Site plan. Pardon, it's not an SUP, it's a site plan.
Site plan, thank you. So with that, after this is built, is there any, is there a restriction for them to operate between, between November fifteenth and April thirtieth?
Yes, I believe that condition covered both operation of the park and construction.
I mean, I would call it maintenance at that point. Once, once this is already built and they're running and they're shut down in the winter, there's already, there's a restriction that it's in place that they can't do maintenance during that time?
Not specifically maintenance, but it stated operation, the operations, so that would be a valid point that I don't think is clarified.
Okay, I was just curious if this was, because condition one limits them to this year only.
Right.
And I guess my question, we do have the applicant here. Do you see this going into operational this summer and needing to continue construction next summer, next winter?
If you're going to answer the questions, if you'd please use the mic and identify yourself. Thank you.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, Mark Thompson with Thompson Law. I'm here with Brett Reed, who's the engineer on this project, and Spencer McBurney, who's the property owner with Old Faithful RV Park. I'm glad, I guess, that you brought up that condition because they still have yet to construct the large building that would be sort of the main center for the campground. So in the future, if they were, again, inside, just doing finished work or completing tasks that wasn't outsider disruptive, they would want to be able to do that or or fix something or repairs inside moving forward. So we're fine with the conditions proposed, but other than we would like it to be able to apply indefinitely during those times. But obviously, no outdoor construction during this November through April time zone.
Without Madam Chair, that was my concern is, I don't, if we did approve this today, they gotta come back every damn winter just to.
Understood, that's an interesting question, but we'll have to address that.
And so for the immediate issue, they're just working on the twelve cabins. They hope to open this summer. This is, you know, they started this project with the county back in two thousand and twenty-three. So they've been working diligently in the six months they get to of time during the summer. Anyway, so the the twelve cabins are all together, they're in the, near the highway side of the property. So any access will be limited to that specific area to do finished work, inside work only, and and just not till later in this spring. So it it should be fairly limited impacts on wildlife or neighbors. That's the plan.
I have had a phone conversation with Spencer. We did talk about this question coming up. We also talked about the fence issue, which is mentioned in a couple of these public comments, in the written comments. I would clarify that the fence will be replaced in the spring when construction is allowed to happen again. And it will be a wood fence as the site plan required, so that will be taken care of. There is a question about the hundred-foot, again, from the high water mark, which is a extremely difficult thing for anybody to try to answer. But I would just let you know that there are concerns that maybe parts of the fence as it exists right now might be in that area. So we might take another look, because it has to be replaced anyway. Take another look at that location and make sure that we're not in violation of the site plan under those conditions. Spencer indicated that I had a conversation with him about the fact that even on a remodel on my house, when the contractor tried to do things inside, his table saw and things were sitting outside, which makes the noise and everything be outside, which is what we're trying to avoid for the neighbors and for the wildlife. I guess I would like to discuss that a little bit about exactly how you see that happening and how you are going to keep all of that type of work restricted to indoors without the noise and disruption. And I don't know, Mr. Thompson, if you want to answer that, or you want to have Spencer answer that, or how you want to go? Thank you.
All I know is that's the goal.
Okay.
So
Just your name for the record.
Spencer Burney, I'm the landowner. I've talked to my builder, and he assured me that he could have all the solves indoors. If he has to use a generator, he would like to leave it inside his enclosed trailer. And that's where we're gonna have probably a problem with just two vehicles there. They're gonna have to bring, they're gonna have to bring material in to go inside the cabin.
One of the comments in some of the public stuff was that the generators were used this summer and that they were extremely noisy. Were they enclosed in a trailer?
No, they were sitting outside.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Question for staff. If I were building a house up there, would I have these kinds of restrictions on building a house?
No. No, that is not something that's reviewed as part of a building application or septic application.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, just the point about the the one person online, will there be tractor-trailers up there during?
There will not be semi-site trailers. It'll be all pickups or enclosed trailers. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, but what I'm understanding you to say, what, and maybe you can clarify if I'm wrong, but I understood you to say that you're gonna need more than two, that it's gonna be difficult to.
Like, we'll have an electrician to finish up some electrical in the cabin that get finished. Then we'll have maybe some plumbers in there, and then we'll have maybe some sheet rock people in there. So I'm sure they're not gonna carpool together. I mean, they're gonna come from different areas. So they're bringing their own vehicles and their own equipment.
So, Madam Chair, are are you saying that you are not going to be able to abide by the Game and Fish suggestion of the two vehicles?
I don't know if that's possible.
I wanted to answer one of Kim's questions, too, as far as who to call on this. Although the Game and Fish weighs in on these issues, it is county responsibility on what we approve and what we follow up on. So any questions or concerns on these situations need to come to the county, whether it's directly to the commissioners or through the Planning and Zoning Office, just to be clear. Thank you.
I mean, they will be, they're gonna be parked right with the cabins. They're not gonna be parked on the rest of the property, so the rest of the property is not even gonna be used as far as set equipment around. They should be staying right with the cabin. They should be staying right with the cabins as well, so.
Um, I guess Jenny, I'm not sure how it was worded, but I understood be able to do indoor construction prior to April 30. How far in advance are you asking to do this? I mean, I understood it to be a month or two, but I don't hear that being said. Not the entire winter, um, the rest of the winter, I mean, it is February, but you know.
Yes, and I. Madam Chair, I think we stated it that way just because we are already in February and we were thinking that this was a one time. One, one season request. So yeah, so maybe, I mean, if we're, if it'll be, you know, perpetual, we should probably state November, is it November fifteenth to April thirtieth?
Okay, my question had more to do with if we were starting any later, if we're saying you're not going in there till March, you know, type of thing, I guess. And that's some of the discussion we originally had was March and April, not clear back to starting tomorrow.
Okay, okay, yeah, and that I, I didn't.
And that doesn't refer to future maintenance or anything, that was just on this issue on getting the construction.
Construction.
I think we're going to have to separate those two things, um, what can be done this year because of where we're at on the calendar. And then what we want to say in the future as far as maintenance or upkeep on, on the property, which wasn't addressed, I guess.
Yes, please, yes.
So Madam Chair, I want to point out first, the number of vehicles would have to be altered. We'd have to change, put that into condition, that's not as staff recommended right now. And then the other I would, I would consider if we, if we move forward on this, uh, condition one of saying something to the point from the now approval now to April thirtieth, so that it doesn't circle. That was my, my question, I guess I didn't state, is this for the calendar year or you're, you don't, you'll propose to be done with interior and then after April firth, April thirtieth, you guys can go back on schedule. So we wouldn't need to go from November fifteenth, it'd be from this point forward to April thirtieth, correct?
Yeah, and we don't anticipate having to do this again, but if we do have to get in the big, like the big building, we don't get it completed. And here we are in this time of year again, and we don't get it completed, we come back and do another amendment for.
Yeah.
You might have to, you might have to, I think we can only address this one today because that's what was brought up. So if we have to address the other in the future, we'll have to address it. And that might depend on how this one gets treated.
Sure.
How we, how we end up deciding to do this or not do this, whichever.
Madam Chair, um, so you'll have to forgive me because I wasn't a part of the process leading up to this. So I just, when I'm considering some of the input of the landowners around you, help me understand, like, some of the conditions that they're concerned about, how, how we got there. So not saying a hundred feet horizontally back from the high water mark of the Shoshone River, um, the two rail plastic fence. How, how did, how did we get outside of that, the site plan stipulations to begin with?
Or as the fence?
Well, there's, there's a couple of concerns, like, you know, not saying a hundred feet horizontally back from the high water mark. And if that's, if that was part of the stipulation of the original site plan, and I don't have it in front of me. And then also the two rail plastic fence was part of the original site plan. Um, and some of the concerns about, you know, putting a cistern on BLM, parking vehicles on BLM, that kind of thing. How did that happen to begin with? So I think the concern that I'm hearing from the public or from the other landowners is that there's not been, um, I don't want to say an effort, I don't know what the right word is, but there hasn't been a consistent following of the original site plan. And, and so help me understand, did you interpret the site plan differently? Did, how did that happen?
I believe the high water mark, Mr. Livingston was involved in that, or I think went out to the property representatives from the commissioners and assessed that and helped to determine where that is. So as far as I know, I wasn't aware that there was anything in violation. I thought that that was established.
Okay.
And then the fence was an oversight, that there was the word wood in, as a material to be used on that. And so that's already been addressed by the planning and zoning office. And, um, there's already an understanding that that's going to be remedied.
Okay.
By the owner, so that was just an oversight. And, and it's already has a path to being fixed. Once outside construction is open.
Okay.
They have a timeline to get that back in compliance. So that's the only issue that we're aware of that was not compliant and that was by accident and it's being fixed at his expense.
Okay.
The other thing that I would say in regards to the cistern or anything with the water system and the septic system per se, those are DEQ approved, not Park County. So whatever was requested and being used there for this public use, the county did not have approval or denial in those. It had to do with the DEQ, so questions in, in that realm need to go to DEQ.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a comment about the hundred foot setback. And about the cistern as well. I've talked to a couple of surveyors and surveying where that setback should be is a very standard procedure. The fact that kind of went in and tried to make up a new rule for where that was, was odd to begin with, but the actual site plan says one hundred feet horizontally from the high water mark. Surveyors have been on that property several times. And I don't think it would be difficult for them as surveyors to mark where that is. And the cistern was more about where they dug to put it in the ground. Uh, the county engineer allowed them to not do the geotechnical survey because they said the bank would not be disturbed. And then the giant cistern was dug in right at the bank. And I mean, it's just, I guess, the kind of lack of respect for the river and for the property, the using of the BLM land as if it was part of the property. Um, that, that is concerning. Because it kind of makes your words something that I'm not sure I can count on. Even in writing, it doesn't seem to be something that they're adhering to. And I know that they can't be on site every day, but somebody has to be in charge on their end to make sure that all of the, the site plan is followed properly.
Thank you. We did close the public hearing, didn't we?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I.
There won't be any more comments, Kim, I'm sorry, but the public hearing is closed, I couldn't get you, get your attention quick enough, but. Um, and I would say as far as the BLM goes, that is also not our call, that is neighbor land. And if people were concerned, if you notice that, then the BLM would be, have to, would be notified on that, not, not the county. We have no control over that land or what people do on it. So, um, that is one area that we can't deal with. Spencer, you do have an engineer here. And I don't know, Mr. Reed, if you're able to address the, uh, the situation with the fence and the high water mark. I know that there were determinations made. Can you help us with that one, please?
Madam Chair, Brett Reed with Engineering Associates, representing Spencer for the project. The, as you recall, and I think it's noted in the, in the public hearing that we had when we did the site plan, the hundred foot setback, uh, was although the resolution says horizontal, the, the agreed upon piece from the high water mark was a direct line to that point, straight line. You know, originally we talked about going up and then straight, and that was not agreed to. And it was just then a straight line cut like this through that, to that point. And so that's, that was a error, I think, in the county resolution from what was agreed to in the commission's meeting. Number one. Number two, um, with regard to the, to the hundred foot, um, open space requirement, you know, for, for development, that, I guess the question is, uh, and, and about the fence is that we didn't develop any of the park outside of that or in, you know, the, the hundred foot line was kept, all the RV spaces stopped at that hundred foot line. But, uh, you know, there's fences up and down the valley that go beyond that hundred foot, right up to the edge of the river. You know, and so is not the property owner allowed to put his fence to the edge, just like everyone else is? You know, we're not developing that area, it's still open space, but the fence is, 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 is right there. So we've, we've tried to honor the open space requirement, but we're, we actually, you know, uh, it's a fence. It's not a development of a building or a RV spot, you know, it's a fence. And so that's, I think that's the, the intent of why the fence is where it is, 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 is to, to, you know, kind of go to the edge of the hill where, um, everyone else's fence goes. Okay. So that's, that would be the comment about, about those things. So the open space area, that hundred foot is still open space, but there is a fence there, as everyone else has a fence there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I think, I know these things aren't in the request for today. The request for today has to deal with construction time on indoors. But because of the impression that some rules have been stretched or disregarded, I think they needed to be addressed in order to keep things moving forward and everybody on the same page. So that's why we've been talking about a few of these other things that don't necessarily affect inside construction, but kind of prove with the project. So. Other questions or concerns from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, I just want to, because of some of these concerns, I do appreciate you guys coming in and, and requesting an amendment, um, that's what it's for. And to, so that we know that we're not stepping over that fence a little bit, one way or the other. Uh, and I somewhat, I, I have, totally have to agree, a fence, what's the purpose of a fence generally in Wyoming? It's to deter livestock or things from going around it and nobody fences from a hundred feet from a river. So, um, with that, I'm going to go out on a limb here and I'm going to move to approve, uh, the amended site plan for Old Faithful RV Park, um, as presented by staff with, with three conditions, the three stated conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? And with the blessing of the commissioners, I'd like to ask staff, because I think she has something to input there.
I was just thinking that maybe we still need to clarify, um, our statement there, the active, the construction activities on the property before April thirtieth, do we, do we need any more clarity on the dates?
Do you want March one to April thirty, or do you want today at April thirty, do you want just April?
February fifth to April thirtieth.
Is that an amendment to your motion?
Yes, is the, the changing condition one to starting as soon as this is approved to April thirtieth.
Is that okay with the second?
Yeah, second, I, I don't, I guess, just for clarification purposes, what would be the concern with letting them, why are we trying to restrict it to March?
That's just a conversation we had originally, was March one through April and.
I asked for March one through.
Right, through April thirty.
I didn't figure we could get this resolved before March.
Okay, yep, um, second, that.
Madam Chair.
My only other question, I guess, for the, the, the motion is the concern on the number of vehicles as expressed by the game and fish, that was a suggestion. Any action on that level?
Madam Chair, I, my, my thought is, I, I don't feel like the game and fish, um, to me, that number seemed arbitrary, I don't, they didn't provide an explanation for the num, why the restriction to two. And I would have needed more information to me, like what, why two, uh, you know, so I'm, I don't, I think as long as, and we can't really stipulate this in the, um, motion, but I think my suggestion would just be with, be reasonable, right, you know?
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Madam Chair, um, I guess a couple of things with regards to the vehicles, we're talking about construction within fifty feet of a major highway that has vehicles going up and down it. And I do disagree with some of the statements occasionally about this being a big old migratory herd, when it's actually a resident herd, it just kind of moves down the valley. And another issue I have is we can have somebody building a six thousand square foot house up there with fifty vehicles with no restrictions, and we're going to try to restrict, um, this owner to two vehicles. I, I, I understand there's some not happiness in the valley. But I, I think to restrict the property owner more than we would another landowner up there is, is just not right. So I mean, I'm, I'm in approval of the motions.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve?
Madam Chair, um, I think like what Commissioner Stewart was saying, that, you know, there are a lot of people looking at this. And the same people are at a meeting with us and landlords could do whatever the heck they want, they're from the North Fork. But now they're keeping an eye on you and they, and we want to see it less intrusive, not only for the wildlife, but also for public out there, especially during this off season. If you have two or three trucks, if you're indoors and you have the generator that's inside of the trailer, I think that's less intrusive. So I don't see a problem with that. Just keep in mind that there are people watching you guys out there quite a bit, and I probably don't have to remind you of that. So I think, um, just, uh, you know, until we get to that magic date when the wildlife are the truth, are, are any problem with this. Uh, I think, uh, if you just keep that in mind, that, that less is probably better.
Any further discussion on the motion for approval of indoor construction to be able to begin tomorrow, um, through April thirty on finishing the indoors on this project this year? Hearing no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The other thing I just want to say as a comment, um, in my conversation with Spencer, he told me that his buildings have been egged, his pickups have been egged, his crews have been screamed at by locals that, well, presumably locals that pull into the yard. I just don't think that's how we want to treat people here in Wyoming, and I just want to say that's not acceptable. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Never had a percent sure we need to read works.
The first.
Thank you.
Condition, if we approve it, it goes to April thirtieth and twenty five.
Yeah, that's the way it was written, yeah. But just wanted to be sure what the.
Yeah.
Okay, um. We got everybody? The next thing on our agenda is a decision on the FFA service project request. And if the commissioners would look at their sharepoint, there is a, a hand drawn sketch of a, a bench, I guess I would call it. From a project with Buffalo Bill FFA for community service. They would like to put this bench up somewhere in, on the courthouse grounds. I believe that our county clerk and deputy county clerk have reviewed some places that may be reasonable. Colleen, do you want to jump in here with what your thoughts were?
Yes, Madam Chair, me and Trevor, uh, got together, looked at several places, um, outside the building, where this could possibly sit during the summer months. And with it being stored probably inside during the winter months, if it got bad, just to keep it out of our way of snow plowing and that kind of stuff. We, um, looked at several different things, we didn't make an exact decision yet on where. But we feel if the FFA wants to bring forth this community project and chose the courthouse, that we should be willing to accept that from them, and I will contact her if that be your desire.
Thank you. Any discussion from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, I think it'd be nice to be out front during parade season. As long as kids aren't skateboarding on it. As long as kids aren't skateboarding on it, it's a non-smoking area, you know.
Uh, we looked more at the back, so we looked at the part over here by the, by the kitty corner from the high school. We looked at the sidewalk there, only because we do have some benches and we have that beautiful area out front already. Um, but you know, if you guys would prefer it be out front, me and Trevor didn't look at that, but we sure could.
If it's movable, which it sounds like it will be, we could always try it somewhere. And if it doesn't seem to work there, then we can move it um, for the next season. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I, I just want to say, I think it's a great idea, and I want to thank the, the FFA from the high school to donate this. My question, I guess, is, does, does this really require action, or is this administrative? And I, I mean, it, I, I would say, I agree. And um, leave it up to our building and ground superintendent as to where to place with input from staff.
Yeah, I don't think we need to decide on where. We just need to decide if we're going to allow it on property or not.
Correct. I believe that's her, that's her goal, is to make sure that she can do her community project and have it placed somewhere here at the courthouse.
Commissioners?
I'd make a motion to approve the community service project um, for placement at the courthouse per um, building and grounds location.
Second.
They moved in seconded to approve um, the request for the FFA service project bench to be placed on courthouse property at a future determined location.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to weigh in. I think it's a great idea, and I'm just, thanks for their, uh, their project.
They, they did turn this in in December, so hopefully they're still holding on to, holding on for my answer of yes, that they can go ahead and do it. So, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move we go into executive session.
They moved in seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion on the motion?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
One question, am I going to be muted out? Do I need to call in?
Well, um. Yes, if you would please call on my cell, I will turn it on.
Okay.
If you would do that, please.
Because I think, yeah, I think it cuts me out, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott, you want to come back online?
Yep.
Okay.
You got me?
Gotcha.
You got me?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, we did blow through the break. Sorry. Hi. Take a seat at the table. I'm assuming you're Daniel. Nice to meet you, Daniel. So, the next thing on our agenda, commissioners, is an interview for the state shooting complex joint powers board with Daniel Michael. And I'd like to take just one second, as long as we're on the topic of the state shooting complex. There was some false information floating around yesterday that the commissioners in Park County had approved $6 million of tax money to go toward the shooting complex, and that is absolutely not true. There is a dollar amount listed of approximately $6 million that the committee agreed to try to raise through sponsors and donations, but that has nothing to do with the Park County Commissioners or the Park County tax dollars. Thank you. So, with that, we would like to have our interview get going. So, first of all, thank you for applying for this.
Thank you for considering.
And if you would give us a little bit of information as to your background and your thought process for applying for the board.
Yeah, my background is I'm currently the curator of the Firearms Museum. I moved to Cody to work at the museum about eight years ago, so I've lived in Park County for those eight years. I've... Is that better?
Just for...
Sure. All right. And so I've lived in Cody for about eight years, worked at the museum for those eight, been curator since, of the firearms museum since 2021. I'm originally from the East Coast, grew up in Western Maryland on a farm out in Washington County, for anybody that's from the area. Grew up around hunting, wasn't a huge hunter myself as a kid. My brother hunted a lot and tried to drag me out, but didn't stick when I was a kid, but learned to love it out here in Wyoming when I had the opportunity to do that out here and have taken interest in the, you know, shooting sports and hunting world since, in addition to my job, it's kind of a hobby and a day job. I was asked to work with the committee that put together the Park County proposal for the shooting complex that we pitched to the task force. And so I had the opportunity to work on that for the last 10 months or so and was able to go down to Casper to testify to the task force. And I've tried to use the museum's opportunities and network within the firearms industry and firearms world to help out our proposal and help out the shooting complex wherever, wherever we can, since, you know, we've taken the approach that it's a good opportunity for the state and brings an interested audience for us as well. So, we see it as a mutually beneficial opportunity.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Teal?
A hot seat right out of the gate. Michael, thank you for applying. I mean, you're aware that we don't know for certain whether this is going to happen.
Yes.
If it does, where do you see this facility in 10 years?
That's a great question. I hope to see this facility in 10 years and work on making sure that it's got a full schedule of national level events each and every year. That's bringing a lot of a lot of folks to Park County and to the state. That's the, the goal as I understand it from the state, and I think it's a worthwhile goal to pursue. And I think we have the opportunity to, you know, the state during our task force meetings around the number of 12 to 15 major events a year. I think that's easily, you know, that's an attainable goal. I had the opportunity, the museum goes to shot show every year. That was just a couple of weeks ago. And we had the opportunity to talk to folks there about both the museum and the shooting complex. And there's a lot of interest already within the firearms world about the shooting complexes. Where it is getting around Wyoming is undertaking this. So I think there's a really good opportunity to fulfill that goal from the state. And I, I see that in 10 years, I think we'll be there.
Hey, thank you.
So in the, I'm assuming you've read the joint powers board bylaws.
Yes, I've read through them as they stand now with the caveat that everything's still a little bit.
Okay. And, and so there's different areas, you know, of where each member would, what, where they would represent. And I'm assuming, I think there was a, I don't have it in front of me, but I think there was a firearm. When in that, is that where you would see your role?
Yes, that's, that's where I intended to apply for.
And I suppose, well, thanks for applying. Daniel, the, I suppose history also, education would be one of your, one of your strong suits, right?
Yeah, I would like to think so. I hope that it's something that we're good at and that I contribute to at the museum. Obviously, education about a variety of topics at the museum is our goal, mine in particular about firearms, education, both history, safety, the opportunities that Wyoming has to offer are all very important to us. And so when we were at the task force meeting again, you know, we talked a lot about the, the, the educational mission of the facility in addition to the recreation components. And obviously, that's something that the museum would value really strongly is education, safety, education, hunter education, whatever the opportunity might be, is that's a core mission of ours.
How do you, how do you feel that the, the museum would work with the shooting complex and vice versa? How, how do the two combine or intertwine?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. Obviously, I'm applying here to be, you know, I'm putting aside my day job. I want to serve on the joint powers board as, as myself, but I think there is a lot of opportunity to leverage a joint connection. You know, there's a pretty obvious, at least to me, connection between the potential audience for the shooting complex and the firearms museum. You know, we're a, what people tell us all the time. So I don't think I'm bragging too much is that we're a bucket list destination for firearms enthusiasts. And I think this shooting complex has the opportunity to be the same. So I see this as a joint, there's joint marketing opportunities for a similar audience, you know, both audiences are a high propensity to visit the other and to spend their recreation dollars with each location. And then there's important networking opportunities, you know, the museum. We've been in the firearms world, I mentioned shot show and traveling a lot for several years. We have a number of board members that are involved in firearms world. So we have some strong connections that we can draw on, make introductions hopefully, and, and leverage those as a way to, so that whoever's on the joint powers board isn't starting from scratch to try and knock at the door into that world.
Commissioner Stewart's joining us through. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, and thank you, sir, for applying. I like what you're saying, and you've answered some of my questions with Commissioner Mangle. Having been very active in the shot show for about the last 14, 15 years, had the pleasure of attending with Governor Mead down there when he started the task force to try to, try to bring businesses to Wyoming. I guess my question was, one of the questions, how would you use your experience and your knowledge with the museum and your job with the museum to maybe collaborate at the shot show and bring in, you know, to promote it? And at the same time, do you think there would be any kind of conflict between the museum and this position?
Yeah, those are really good questions. I think the, to the first one about how we could collaborate at shot show. You know, I think there's a, there's a lot of opportunity, whether it's having, you know, display space down there. That's something we've done for several years now. You know, the state of Wyoming makes a big effort to do that themselves. So there's certainly opportunity to, to work together on that part. Joint meetings, networking, all the kind of introductions that you might expect at a big trade show like that, I think would be the obvious routes for collaboration. And then probably there's a lot of joint marketing, you know, whether it's brochures or you know, all the, the different marketing opportunities that come up at shot show just to showcase Cody with a complex and the museum as two big draws for that audience. I think if the goal, you know, the goal in museums to get people to come visit and the goal of shooting complexes to get people into the state. And I think that's a really a really collaborative goal that we can work together on. So to me, I think there will be a lot of opportunities to, to do that together with the, whether I'm on the joint powers board or not, you know, I look forward to, to that collaboration.
Well, second, I guess another question, sorry to interrupt. Do you have a feeling on the museum as far as their interest in, in to help market this, this range?
Yeah, I would say we have a strong interest to help market the range. Again, it's, you know, that we had a, a couple of years ago, we had somebody come out for a marketing consultant, talking about different opportunities and they broke down visitors, you know, that obviously a lot of our visitors are coming through Yellowstone. So they're breaking down the types of people that come through Park County and, you know, firearms interested audience and they, they classify those as what they called a high propensity visitor. And so I've been, I've stolen that term and I don't know if I use it right or not, but it seems to me that our people in attending the shooting complex would be high propensity visitors to the museum. We've seen that play out with existing events, shooting events in Cody, whether it's been the governor's match in years past or others. We've seen a lot of attendance, I think, to an event where they were shooting a match all day. It was when governor's match was 2019, I think. There were about 250 competitors, they shot all day. We hosted a reception for them. They organized that at the museum. And we have a shooting simulator, which is electronic range, which is much less exciting than a real range in my mind, but it's very fun. And then they were racing there all night and we had about 200 of them. So most of the competitors have been on the range all day, came to the museum, spent time in the galleries, visited the firearms museum, and then, you know, participated and interacted as we had. So it's played out a lot that these kind of visitors enjoy the museum and want to spend time with us as well. And we'll add days to their trip, which is, you know, ultimately a good goal for the whole county or a good result for the county, I think. So yeah, it seems to me there's a lot of crossover. So we, we have a strong interest in, in drawing that audience.
Anything else, Commissioner Stewart?
No, I just, I appreciate his expertise and thanks for applying.
I'm back to a couple of kind of questions. Have you served on a board before?
No, this would be my, my first opportunity to serve on a board.
Okay. There's a couple of things with this one that may be a little different. Have you had employees before?
Yes.
Okay.
I do manage staff at the center.
Okay, all right. I have no idea how deep that might or might not get out there for a while. I know I've heard conversations about manage, you know, a manager type thing or something, but that would be controlled by the board. Any other commissioners come, commissioners, any other questions come to mind?
I just have one quick question, Daniel, if I can. Being a member of the task force and you've been out there kind of advocating for this shooting range, do you feel that the $6 million donor sponsor, do you feel like that having been out and heard kind of what people are saying, do you feel like you're that there is that support out there right now?
Yeah, I think there's, you know, obviously, it's a lot of hard work to raise any amount of money. So I don't, to, I don't want to say this too, you know, brazenly, but I do think there's opportunity to raise that 6 million. You know, through sponsorship opportunities within the firearms industry, private fundraising, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I had a few of those initial conversations, you know, obviously I wasn't trying to overstep my bounds as the, you know, I was down at shot shows the museum, but people were asking me a lot of questions about the, the shooting complex. So, you know, I talked with folks there, several major companies like Winchester Ammunition, for example. Those are companies that are very interested in large sponsorship opportunities like this. So I think there will be that opportunity to, to fundraise that amount. It'll be a lot of work, but it's there.
Do you have any questions for us?
I guess, I realize that the, everything's a little bit in there with the state deciding. What, what kind of timeframe do we see, do the commissioner see for having the powers, joint powers board in place?
We've completed most of our interviews. So we have that information that I'm aware of. We need to wait on the legislature, which could be as late as mid to end of March before we'll actually know whether everything went into place or not. But with that said, we will be able to make our determination on the makeup of the board pretty quickly, as soon as we know that and get the board started. So that's my understanding. Does anybody feel any differently?
No, you nailed it.
Okay, so. Okay.
No other questions. I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you and interview.
No, we appreciate you applying. And just for clarity, Daniel was in the first list and we didn't pick him up. The city did because of his address, but because he is a county citizen and the city has their realm they're covering and we have six that we are supposed to kind of be looking for, we kind of moved him over here. So that's where we're at.
Happy to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is Brian Edwards, the county engineer. And he's here with a request for a partial release of retainage funds on behalf of Grothe House Construction for the courthouse HVAC replacement project. Sure. And he brings in break, big print, which we enjoy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So as you know, over the last year plus, we've embarked on major rehabilitation at the courthouse, courthouse addition and public works building in the area of like HVAC improvements, lighting, and some other related, related improvements. That work is now substantially complete. We're at the point of, we've got a punch list on going on mainly building automation system related things and a couple of items in the public works office, some carpet related issues, but for the most part, we're at the point of substantially, substantial completion. As you can see, our current contract amount, which includes all three buildings, is the $7,620,629. All of that, of course, is, was ARP, ARPA related funding, funded anyway. And you can see the amount billed to date, including retainage, which includes the invoice that you just approved today. which leaves about 442,452 left on the contract in terms of remaining work. We will not probably do all that work and probably close to about half of that over the next month or two, we'll, we'll get that finished up. But that, that amount still left in the, in the agreement of that 7.1 million, 7178 that's been built to date, including retainage, we're sitting on about $358,909 in the retainage account. And a lot of that's for work that's already been done, it's been paid out. So Grothe House has requested that we release part of the retainage in the amount of 276,447, which still leaves plenty of money within the retainers to fix the punch list items that we've got remaining. We will, they've got lead release waivers from everything that they've paid out to date. We'd advertised for the 44 days for the courthouse, courthouse edition. We'll do the same on the public works building. We'll get all that wrapped up. So we're really at the point of probably a month, two months from wrapping this up completely. Few little odds and ends to work out, but to sit on that amount of retainage, I think is appropriate to let some of that loose because they have paid their subcontractors and, and have done a good job on the project. And I think we're, we're sitting good. And like I say, there's, there's a good chance that we'll get some amount of that money left unused. So we'll be coming back probably next month with a reconciliation contract change order to basically credit that contract back. But today, we're just looking at releasing the partial amount of the retainage that's held $276,447 to Grothe House.
It kind of chokes to look at 7 million or 7, 600,000, yeah. But I have to, I have to sit back and remember that we're talking that nothing has really been done in here per se since the 80s. And bringing everything, fire code, air conditioning, heating, all of those things back into play, acoustical, the ceilings. It's been a phenomenal project, but it added up in a hurry. So.
Yeah, complete rework, Madam Chair of the, or rework, complete replacement of the HVAC systems and really all three buildings. So quite a bit of work there.
The other thing it allowed us to do, which I was a little amazed when we ended up moving some ceilings and seeing if you can think about 40 years worth of IT changes and how many wires and things we actually cleaned up because they've been put in and used for a single thing and then removed, but the wire was never removed. I mean, there was a whole ceiling full of wires. So I think this is going to help in the long run. And it's helped with the, the fire code situation as far as the building, both, all three buildings actually are concerned. So it's been a, a heavy project.
Yes, it is.
Commissioners, what's your thoughts on releasing a partial amount of the retainage?
Chair moved to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the release of a partial amount of retainage in the amount of 276,447.
Madam Chair, one point of discussion, just, I will be coming back with the reconciliation change order and we'll come back for final project closeout to release any remaining retained. So we'll make sure we all know what some of the remaining issues are that need to be worked out, but we'll make sure that's addressed before we come back.
Okay, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Brian, just, just so I understand, because again, I'm still learning. The, is this outside of the norm? Do we normally do that or?
We, we do. It's, it's purely the owner's discretion. We're required by, by state law to, to withhold 5% retainage, you know, up to the point of substantial completion, which is where we're at. And then it's really a matter of how much work's done, what's been paid and, and what's remained. So it's really the owner's call of, you know, whether or not you want to hold all the retainers till the very end. You're required but to go through the 44 days, which is part of us holding material because it was really three separate projects, really. And so the public works building is the one that hasn't gone through that 44 days yet. So the rest of it, we, you're allowed to release that retainers and all that work has been done and paid for by Grothe House to the subcontractor.
Well, and that's the point of the 44 days. It's advertised that we're going to turn some of that back if we don't hear from anybody that they weren't paid on the project. So they get dividends from everyone that they used as a sub that says, yes, they've been paid.
And that's already been done.
So we've got the lead release, they call them partially release waivers. They've got lead release waivers for everything that's been paid. And they will have final lead release waivers from everybody before we release the final retainage. So when we come back and they'll have to have that for everybody, but everything that the county has paid them, we have lead release waivers for all their subcontractors and suppliers.
Which, and so that's the reason we're hanging on to like the 82,000?
Yes, and because there's some punch list items. And that's, that's things like the controls of the automation system that we're still working through a couple of bugs and things there. So we want to hold somebody to get some things wrapped up. And that's very standard to hold on to that amount. It's, that covers what do you have on that punch list item? Or punch list. That's what we're, we're holding.
Thank you.
I have a motion before the board to approve the release of that retainage as stated. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I think with everybody that's coughing down there, I should have just came on in and coughed with you guys.
I swallowed my coffee wrong.
Mine is a perpetual thing, I hope to get fixed. Anyway. Okay.
Bring your motion to adjourn.
Any other business to come before the board?
Move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.